We're basically doing for a tiny thing. Anything we can do to button it up on the way there? Appreciate working with you.
The only thing I have to say is that's an ambitious project to take on four of these sites to be completed all in one year. And if any site is to be uncompleted at the end of the year, it'll be taxed and valued at the percentage of completion. So that if it's halfway done, it will have fifty percent taxation.
Based on calendar?
Based on calendar, yeah. It's from January one to January one, yes.
Alright, so entertain motion.
I move that we accept all four of these things in a pilot.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept all four of that, the Rock Garden Soil LLC, Rock Solar, Four LLC, Fort Rock Solar, One LLC, and Alpha Light Solar LLC. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Well, thank Dave and the process that he's put together to build, make it flow through the Board of Commissioners. Much faster than both of us. So, thank you Dave for that process.
Appreciate it, appreciate the opportunity to business with you.
No, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. So, Melanie, friends in the library updated just whenever they show up. It was the first thing on our non-time agenda, so.
She was supposed to be here at nine.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything from her, but, so.
Alright, so we'll continue moving on down. Mr. Gregory, more solar discussion.
More solar.
This is, this is on the.
There's a couple of.
First thing I have is, well, let's go reverse of what's on the agenda. Let's go with the Garrett Solar easement right away.
Yeah, I was going to.
Let's go with that one first.
For the record, Tom Gregory, City of Renewables. So, Lori found out I was coming down here, so she stacked me up with this evening and stuff, so. I think it's pretty straightforward. These easements and rightaways are both Garrett and Airport. What you guys discussed last month at your, at your meeting. And I think there were just a couple of cleanup items that you sent us home to then do as a hallmark. The agreement, the newest agreements, which I think were sent to you last week. Yeah, were, have been sent to you. The issues that you wanted us to look at were to make it more clear about exclusive use and then the non-interference with the land runway extension.
Correct.
So we've addressed those issues, section.
So, back to the runway, Tom and Dave is here.
Yes.
And I, it does vary that line deeper and addresses that, I need to.
Yeah, and we've been, we need to get things on. We need to get the plans. Our, our general contractor has asked for the plans for the extended runway, just so we know exactly how deep we need to go with that line. But, but just pending those plans, it's not going to be any problem to get it deep enough, not even here.
So, so our plan would be our master plan would show that correct, Tom?
And Lori should have gotten that from you. Yeah, she said she hadn't got it from you or you or Dave, so. All we said is that there shouldn't have been. Okay, yeah, so I'll send that over and then, but by all accounts, it's not going to be a big deal.
No, it's just, it's good for both parties to be done correct.
Yeah, right. And I was hoping nothing happened underneath the line. So, so that was addressed. The exclusiveness of the easement is more spelled out.
What's section five?
I'm looking at the Garrett easement agreement. Section five, exclusiveness of the agreement of the easement. So, basically, anybody else can use the easement as long as they're not putting a line underground crossing our line. So, our line's going to be about, I think, sixty underground. If somebody else were to develop something there, they need to put power lines in there, they need to cross it, they have to go above ground. Because a lot of the engineering about where the line goes underground, it's about soil resistivity and heat and different things like that. So you can't have interference between the line and the top of the ground. So, but with that said, you can walk on it, your line, go overhead with it. Do pretty much whatever you want on that easement. You just can't put a line underground that goes across. Now, you can put one in the trench next to it, and that'd be fine, but.
So, so that begs the question, if we extend that runway and we have runway lights and there's power running down those runway lights that would cross that easement, would that be a problem?
I don't think that, we're worried about transmission line.
Well, it's okay to say we're not worried about it. We don't want to jeopardize or hold us up from being able to put any.
Nothing's going to interfere with that. Those runway lights are going to be.
They're pretty low amount.
Yeah, they're very, yeah, they're very low, they're very low voltage, and so.
So, the minutes will reflect that, the extension of the runway and power for the extended runway will not be a problem.
What we're worried about actually is the, is over on, I'm not worried about it, but where we most likely see this come up is over on Denise's property. Where you have the, you have the county road there. We're going to put it under line while he's got other developers looking at that site. So, the only thing that would restrict them with their lines would be they can't go underground for that power line.
So, so my next question is, is we get past the runway, we, we're going across the county road there. In our master plan, that's where all our development's supposed to go on over there. And then we'll be powered to that over there. Is that a problem?
Well, on that, we are going to, we plan on worrying so deep across the road there.
Well, not on the road itself, on the airport property. And I can't remember exactly where it crosses over there. But our master plan has the whole extension of hangers and everything developing down.
Wow, I mean, that shouldn't be a problem.
It's not all of them.
The, the power comes in over where the new managers are in place. And where there'll be borengers down beyond.
Beyond it, it'll be further north.
North by, yeah, by approximately a thousand feet, yeah, city park or quarter mile, yeah.
Okay.
And, but even if it were in the, in the area, it would be just something that we would build into, you know, your plan. You know, you guys may want to tie into that line, you know, down the road, if you're going to do some development down there in the area, so.
Are you, are you offering free energy off of the solar farm? We'll still take it.
I wish, I wish it did work that way sometimes.
Yeah, it's in the notes.
We wrote it in the notes, that must be wrong.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, I wasn't aware that you didn't want to cross in that line as far as other power sources. No way do we want this to hamper our master plan, our development out there, so that's my concern.
My whole emphasis last time was, if somebody else needed to relocate, we'll cross over.
So those were the, so I brought, we sent those agreements over. I was hoping to get those signed up.
Okay, so what are the other questions? Looking back at my notes, and I haven't found it. What's the size of the easement?
Size of the easement is.
During construction, you have to have a good working path, but after, as I instructed, the usually easements are down pretty narrow.
I think, I want to say it's up there.
I apologize, I'm not fine.
Thirty, thirty foot.
Thirty foot lift?
Thirty foot light strip. And then we are going to.
I guess we need to discuss, why you need thirty feet.
Well, there has to be certain space between, well, there has to be certain space for the guys to work, then there has to be space. We're talking about three trenches, so there has to be space between trenches. So.
Okay.
Yeah, and we are going to put it to the far side of the county road. Somebody else needs to use it in the future, we can use the other half of it.
So, and this is just on the airport property. Are this inclusive on the non-constructed roads?
Yes.
And it's thirty feet on the also.
Yes.
And that seems way out of ordinary. If we ever developed those roads, had a thirty-foot easement in, in the road.
I think that's pretty typical, if we go to do an easement on county road, it's a thirty-foot, thirty-foot easement, yeah.
Lot of places, we don't have thirty feet of it yet.
Yeah, well, it's thirty feet from, thirty feet from the middle.
So, you have ownership, you lost money for paving those roads, sir.
You've been to the.
For whatever it's worth, as a, as a solar guy, thirty feet's about as narrow as you can go on stuff like that for a variety of.
Yeah, I've crossed the airport property, I'm sort of, but the road is where I'm struggling with, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, we, we, I believe we can, I could look, we got thirty-foot easement on the line that goes north of the south into the Blackhead project. As well, on the, off the stock drive there, but it's pretty standard.
Okay.
And the exclusive. Exclusive uses addressed in each of these?
Well, I think. I know where I cited it, and then the easement agreement. The other ones are right away.
Yeah, got you.
Agreement, so I think you wanted it in the.
Easement.
Yeah, the Garrett easement agreement was where it was, it was called for me to talk about it.
You're right.
We are, just the, give you a little update on the projects, they are ready to go. We're ready to build these lines probably next month. So, ready to go with it. We've exercised the option on the easements. Want to speed that easements from across Morgan. And we're ready for us to come out and build. We're just waiting for the ground to dry up a little bit over, across the Denise property. If he just stopped irrigating. So we're anxious to get it going.
Alright, well, we had quite a in-depth conversation, and it looks as if all the questions have been answered. Working with legal counsel, all legal counsel have reviewed it.
Yes.
You have other questions?
Nope, concerns I had, got a grant on the exclusive.
So, entertain a motion on the Garrett Solar right away easement agreement.
I'll move that we accept the right away easement agreement relating to Garrett Solar, as given here.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the right away easement agreement between Lake County. The project is the Garrett Solar project. As legal counsel said, there should be a monetary value, even though we didn't see, we're not trying to rake money off this, but.
We put it in ten dollars.
Yep, to make sure that it is legal and binding, so that has been put in. Thank you for that.
That's ten dollars more time upfront.
Now I hope you spread it out.
And that's your, that's ten dollars per day, per hour, you know, per hour. Motion been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. I took care of the right away easement agreement, Garrett. Thank you, it's been quite a bit of work getting to there.
Yeah.
So which one do you want to tackle next?
I think we'll, come with the agenda, we have on here. Do we have the right away easement agreement for airports?
Okay.
I think you guys have the same.
Same, same question.
Yeah.
Things have been put into it after lengthy discussion, shows the same, same amount for the cost, or that this is an easement, not a right away. So was there any, any particulars that you need to make us aware of that you guys are requesting? And Commissioner, do you have any questions? I, I don't think you was at the last, maybe none of you have reviewed things and stuff.
I'm aware of things that we covered specifically.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you were at that one, I can't remember.
But if it's all been, if you, you Tom?
Yeah. Do you want to try to go with Garrett easement agreement at the same time?
The transmission one.
We, we already done the Garrett.
What we did the.
The Garrett right away.
Well, we did the right away easement agreement.
We haven't done the transmission.
The transmission facilities easement agreement.
Yeah, we have.
Go ahead and get the right away easement agreement for airport solar.
Okay.
Since we don't send work to the.
I, I guess I was waiting, if you had, if you had anything, I apologize.
No, 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 I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything. Again, it's just answering the questions that you guys had.
Tom's reviewed, he was at last meeting, him and Dave both, questions have been answered.
Good.
Alright. I'll make a motion to accept the right away easement agreement, airport solar as presented. Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one is transmission facilities easement agreement, Garrett Solar.
Same thing.
Same thing.
And this is one that had the exclusiveness of the easement that we discussed earlier.
And your question is, is.
The concern I had has been addressed.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Accept the transmission facility easement agreement of Garrett Solar.
I'll second motion, motion's been made and seconded to accept the transmission facilities easement agreement, Garrett Solar. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, Mr. Gregory, the projects will start, we'll start working on those, is it fall?
Soon as the ground's dry enough. Let's get out there. We'd be out there, this week would have been perfect for the, getting stuff irrigated and stuff, so.
So when does that trigger your, your other agreement with us, the payment coming to the airport?
Good question, I have to look at the agreement.
I'm sure that Tom's looking for money for his budget.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. The actual.
We'll have to look at that.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it. Because I, I think the, the actual physically breaking ground and building the project will be, it's in the stride of the spring. So, we're going to build, we're going to build airport and Garrett together.
So we'll, we'll need to review that, because in the spring, we start our budgeting process, and now we'll have possibly a positive impact on the airport budget. Alright, so now we'll move back up to the Oregon Strategic Investment Program, and Mark in just in time. So.
So, I was looking at my calendar, and, pretty interesting. Ten years ago in October, that we had our first meeting with county commissioners, talked about solar. And you were there, and we were talking about the, at the time, the largest solar project in the Pacific Northwest. To be built up in North Lake County, and five megawatt project. And I thought it was a little interesting, but here we are ten years later. Again, talking about the biggest solar project in the Pacific Northwest in North Lake County, and happens to be, you know, four, four hundred megawatt project. So, we commend the county, kind of making that trip for us, along with us, and.
I think two thousand and nine, we had some interesting comments.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've, I think we've all learned a lot in the last ten years. So, I just want to throw that out there, I think we've all come a long way since then, and knowing that we're going to have some new commissioners probably, you know, coming up soon. Been a good ride.
With that, we have Commissioner-elect in the bathroom, Mark Alderton, gray hand, Mark.
Yeah.
He'll be cutting on.
Look forward to working with the new guy.
He wants thousand megawatt.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
Well.
Gigawatt.
Yeah, gigawatt.
I appreciate what you're saying. Over the years, those years, there's been several different opinions, several, several different ups and downs. What we've found out is following the process and letting the process work is the right way to do it. Whether we support solar, don't support solar, or we support wind, or we don't, the process allows for things to happen within your community. And so, back to some of the comments that Ken remembers as well as I do, in some interesting meetings, that was what the Board of Commissioners said. There's a process, and as Board of Commissioners, we allow a process to happen. And so, that's, that's what, how this has materialized. Lake County's sitting in a place where that solar is desirable for investor developers. So, the process has allowed for the development to happen.
And the process has evolved somewhat over the years as well. But, so here we are in another solar project, it's going to be, you know, groundbreaking for this region and the area. And I'm just, you know, I'm just saying at the outset that we appreciate your, your help and your support with us this whole time. So with that, give you a quick update on the project we call the City and Solar Center Fort Rock Project. Four hundred megawatt project, up north, going to sit on. It's going to sit on about three to four thousand acres of property. Most of the property's pretty contiguous. Going through the Energy Facility Society Council for land use on that, that adaptive, because of the size of the project. Very organized project, very burdensome project, thorough. And we've, we've gone through all the studies on the, on the site, you know, the myriad of studies that we've had to do. And we're getting ready to send in the lit application, final application for ABSEX verbal, like, get our site certificate. One thing that we're trying to lock down, and why I'm here today, is to lock down on the Strategic Investment Program Agreement with the county. So we can tell investors in the project that what the tax burden is going to be on this project, you know, just what the estimated tax burden is going to be on this project going forward. I think that what we propose and what we negotiate with the county is fair, based on the cost and value and the other, other projects. For the benefit of some people in the audience. The way that the Strategic Investment Program works as a state program for large-scale projects. It's for, projects usually pencil to go into a strategic investment program when they're a couple hundred million dollars or more. We think this project is going to be, the initial cost, if we build the full four hundred megawatts, is going to be just over five hundred million dollars. So, with that, if you're over five hundred million dollars in the Strategic Investment Program, the way the calculations work in a nutshell is, you take the first fifty million dollars of the project, and you tax it outright at the tax basis, so it just looks like your regular property tax return. And then, and then you negotiate with the county a community service fee based on the value of the project going forward. And we've estimated the value of our project in the first year, based on the income method. And a model that we've received from the State of Oregon Department of Revenue, to be about three hundred eighty-five million dollars. That generates a, that generates a tax revenue, a tax base of three, three hundred eighty-five million dollars. And then, the benefit from the program is you basically take seventy-five percent of that. Or you tax, you tax twenty-five percent of that, that seventy-five. That three hundred eighty-five million dollars. After you exclude the fifty million dollars, so you basically take three hundred eighty-five, less fifty million that you're already getting taxed on. Take that number, multiply it by, by twenty-five percent, and that's the amount of, and then you multiply the tax rate on that. And that's the amount of taxes that you pay under the agreement. That's by the state calculation. To avoid having to go to the state every year to do a calculation, we're proposing that we just do a flat per megawatt for the length of the project. That way, there's no arguing over what the valuation is, what the valuation method is each year. We don't have to go back and, go back and look at, you know, what the valuation of the project is every single year. And it's more what the county's used to seeing, like in a pilot agreement, where you have a certain amount that you pay per megawatt every year. When you go through and calculate, when you just do a straight calculation on a four hundred megawatt project, the. It comes out to about. The community service fee comes out to about, an average over a fifteen-year period, about fifteen hundred dollars. It starts at twenty-three hundred, and it goes down to ninety-sixty-eight. That's if we just did the calculation.
That's per megawatt?
Per megawatt. Per megawatt. Okay, so the average is about fifteen hundred, it's fifteen hundred and eleven dollars per megawatt. We're proposing to pay two thousand a megawatt.
At state's constant.
For the full.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So what that means in the first year, so the big two hundred, two thousand dollars times four hundred megawatts is a hundred thousand dollars that your community service fee, plus the taxes from the fifty million, which is about five hundred and fifty million.
Five hundred?
Yeah, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. That's gonna go with that other.
Yeah. Comes out to one point three five million in the first year. And then it grows slightly over the term, um, over the term of the agreement because that fifty million dollar number grows by three percent a year. So we're taxed on that, you know, it increases you three percent. So it goes from one point three five to the overall money, to one point six million overall money over twenty years. And has, um, prepared, you know, a schedule for, for your convenience to look at, to see how that, how that money would be split out under this formula. I don't know if you have that in mind. But, um, that's kind of for your, for your review. I prepared the exhibit A, the big spreadsheet, it's in micro font, it's hard to read. Before you look at it to see how the, how the numbers were calculated.
I, I didn't obviously see, you could do exhibit A. Does it enter packet?
I haven't received it, sorry.
Oh.
You write that exhibit A that he's using to show how he got to the two thousand dollar megawatt is not, is not.
But he reflected that in this.
Yes.
So it's, it's reflected in these numbers, so. And the numbers bear out what I was, what I was saying.
That exhibit A and exhibit B do become part of the agreement though because of the statement that says we will look at the initial values in that estimate when it's all said and done and adjust up or down accordingly. If it's higher than a ten percent.
Yeah, so the process of, the evolution of this agreement was like, okay, how do we know, because we have to estimate a value today to satisfy our investors and have an agreement in place with the county. And the concern from, uh, Commissioner Shown was like, well, how do we know what the values are gonna be when you actually complete the project? So we put some language in the agreement that, um, just as a language says, when we complete the project, we're gonna go back and look at the, look at these numbers again. And if they change, if the purchase agreement that we've priced this assumption changes, or the costs change, or, you know, the calculation changes, rules change, whatever, we're gonna put it back into this formula. And if it changes by more than ten percent either way, we're gonna adjust the community service fee by that amount. By, by, you know, ten or twelve percent. If it's within a ten percent range either way, we're simply so that gives the, um, the county some, um, some protection. And it actually gives us some protection. So, um, that was a kind of clever way to, to deal with that. So we don't have to go back and value, value, go through a whole valuation process every single year.
I can tell you that what, in the data basis, looking at how the state even values utilities right now that we have in place, would be pipeline specifically. I, um, I think David and Bill would strongly encourage signing agreements like this that give us a known payment. It's, um, too late in the game when the state actually values these and provide the information for us to do, make decisions on for the budget year. So these agreements, I think although they're long in nature and they're uncertain in some ways, that stable payment and that known amount is very beneficial.
I concur with Dan on that. Yeah, I support that also. From most places, I think, you know, you can have some variations.
Right. Because there could be, you know, we, we might wind up building a three hundred megawatt project, you know, and, and, uh, use the formula and calculate it on the per megawatt base, the total amount on per megawatt basis. If it changes by more than ten percent, we're gonna make it.
So what we're going to is accept from her and let the yearly fluctuation lie within that.
Not the yearly fluctuation, but the, yeah, when we get done with the, when, when we're finished with the project, we, we, we go back to the spreadsheet and say, okay, has anything changed in this? And if it has, we plug it in and if it calculates a ten percent, plus or minus difference, it would, it'd, uh.
Well, when this project first hit the, uh, news media, it was eight hundred megawatts.
Yeah, I don't know where they earn that eight hundred. We talked about six hundred for one. And we intended to build six hundred, but we have a big piece of land that, um, probably will use because of cultural issues.
So, so for today, I, I was, I approached this as this is information today, we're not taking action on it today. You brought this forward. There's quite a few things that this does. We have to sit down with the taxing districts and bring them on board.
Well, so the, um, the way that sit, um, process works, there's, there's two agreements. There's one agreement between me and you. And then there's another agreement that's completely separate from this process between the county and it's the taxing districts.
Effective taxing districts.
Yeah, effective taxing districts. And, um, so we have to, um, as part of the process, we have to bring this agreement forward in a public meeting, that's what we're doing today. And, uh, let people have a public comment on the agreement. And then, um, and then once you approve the agreement, then we send the packet in with our applications to the state economic relevant department with a check, of course. And then they, um, review it. And then they, they, they are the ones who actually approve the, um, the package and, and put it, officially put it into the strategic investment.
Okay, so, um, the way you talk is almost like the hearing process is it goes to a commission meeting and a public comment accepted. That's, that sort of, it's a hearing process, that's not what this is today. And are you wanting public comments to go towards this today whenever the public haven't had a chance to review the, I consider this sort of draft.
It just has to go to a public meeting.
A public meeting?
Yes. And, uh, you know, beyond, you know, it's a public meetings, there's a public agenda, there's a, you know, there's minutes. So people, you know, so people at least have an opportunity to review it if they want to review it. They can make comments in the interim between now and whenever you guys want to.
So, so this is your proposal to us for a sit?
Yes.
Okay. So we, we can take that under review and, and look at that. So your, to go out, your process, that check process, does this have to be done before? This does not have to be?
No, um, but, um, for investment purposes and, you know, before we can go out and really try to sell this thing, you have to, they're gonna wanna know, what's, you know, what's the deal, what do you have in common with the county? What's the tax burden of a lot of this? And, um, so we, you know, we'd like to get it done sooner versus later. The other, the, uh, the other thing going on with this agreement and, um, and I'm happy to, um, really excited to talk about is our deals we're doing with the Northlake School District in conjunction with this agreement. So, uh, we've, uh, promised to, to, we've, we've agreed to make a pledge to the school of ten thousand dollars per megawatt. One time payment for each megawatt built. Assuming we keep this agreement like we have drafted with the county. What that means to the school, if we build a four hundred megawatt project, is that we would write a check to the school's foundation for four million dollars on completion of the project. So, um, the county's gonna get one point three five to one point six million dollars every year over the course of fifteen years. And then the school's gonna get a four million dollar check up north. That's a lot of money to the school.
And when he says the county, he means all the taxing districts?
Yeah, the taxing districts of the county, yeah. And, um, so we're, um, we're excited to get it going. The school's excited to, to get it going. We're not gonna sign the pledge with the school until we have a signed deal with the county.
And back to that taxing districts, the school's taken out of that form, so generally the general fund county gets about twenty-six percent. That changes because the school isn't in that taxing district form on this, correct?
Well, it's even different because we're looking at a specific tax code area that is not, you know, there's only seven, seven tax districts there. So, um, that percentage that the county has is even a little bit higher in this scenario. Yes, but the school district comes out of the two thousand dollar, um, they won't get a portion of that two thousand dollars per megawatt. That community service fee will be split between everybody else, not the district.
What about the fifty million dollars under normal taxation?
They will get that. They can't, we can't do that.
Normal taxation period.
Yep.
Okay.
To, to go into that just a little bit further too, um, it is a separate agreement with the taxing districts that we will enter if, if we're still all on the same page that we're going to distribute these, just like we do regular taxes currently on a pro-rata basis. It's probably wise to make a statement when we move forward here that every year we're looking at the taxing districts that are in operation for that tax year. For instance, if there is a new district that is voted in by the citizens up there when they become eligible, if they do within this fifteen-year time period, the year they do, they would get a share of that community service fee as well. By the same token, if something is excluded, if, if we have, if, if we get rid of a taxing district, the same would apply.
And, and that would be whenever we negotiate with those taxing, sit down with those taxing districts and make sure that language is in there.
Yes.
This needs some careful care.
Yes, because this, again, this is going to be in place for fifteen years.
What you don't want to happen, I mean, this is your agreement, I don't really have to see the table of this, but what I can see happening is four or five years down the road, you have a new taxing district up there, say EMS. And they go back and say, okay, well, I mean, we want a part of this community service fee. The other taxing districts are still, could say, well, we already made our deal, you weren't around at that time. So to avoid that, um, you wanna have some good information there.
Yeah, well, and especially where there is talk about going out for potential taxing districts and stuff, so, yeah, just correct thing, the right thing.
That'd be the same as what Dan alluded to, if one comes in, they do when it comes in, or if a system one goes out.
Right.
And for the audience, the seven taxing, taxing districts we're talking about are Northlake Health District, County Extension Service, the County Library District, county itself, of course, Central Oregon Community College, ESD, and the Northlake School District, those are the seven.
And that's all, so people understand, that's all predicated based on where this is being built.
Yes.
Those are the, the taxing districts that provide services for this property.
There's a glitch with the school district because if they give somebody, then it's also the state, you know, all that. Is ESD also so affected?
Yeah, ESD runs through their.
But COCC does not, I understand.
No.
Okay. And that's part of that reason for the four million dollars to the school foundation.
Right.
Because otherwise it would, so not getting.
Private agreement between, we try to come up with something that the state can't interfere with. So, um, you know, it's hard for me to imagine a situation where the state could interfere between private number and the school.
You know, I'll say, dude, that's between you and the school and they'll figure it out. We don't figure out if that follows the guidelines of the state and that's not, nothing to do with us.
But, um, we're pretty excited about it up there. We're excited to get this in place and do that pledge agreement. So, because we get asked all the time up there, what are you, what are you doing for us? What's, what's the benefit to our area? And, um, I'd like, you know, we could tell them we've been working on this. It'd be nice to tell them, look, this is what we pledged, what we plan on doing. Have a solid answer to that. Besides the jobs and, you know.
Other questions? We'll take it under consideration and take more further review.
Could we put it on the, when's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is November sixth, I believe. Sometime around then.
Think we could put it on the agenda for consideration of that?
I, I myself would like to put it on out to the first part of December. We're only, I believe we're only having one meeting in November, or else it'll affect me that I'd like to do that. I, I have to do quite good research on this myself. I know Commissioner Shown's done quite good research, I don't know if Commissioner Kestner has. Our obligation to the other negotiations or sit down with the taxing districts, what kind of grant that mean and everything. And this, this will not hold up your upset process, you said that, doesn't hold up that part. So you can go forward with that part of your, this is a key part for your investors in selling the project.
And it's also, I think it's, um, important and not to offend the new commissioners coming in, but, um, you guys have been doing this and you've been looking at it, you know, you're gonna be up to date on it. It'll be, you know, it would slow things down a lot if we had to go back to the train. You know, bring, bring, bring two other commissioners up to speed on everything. Try to do that. So if we can get it done by the end of the year, that'd be.
Okay, great. Well, um, my route should be the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Knowing that I, I'm gonna be missed, me personally, I'm gonna wait for conference, but I've got some other time.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure we get it on one of those meetings to give you guys enough time to look at it and give people enough time to send in comments if they don't want and so forth. And then, um, but, but the sincere hope is that we can get it signed up next meeting, next time we meet on this issue.
Okay.
So if you wanna do that on the first week of December.
And a work session's on the fourth, rep assessment's on the fifth.
Talk about it someday.
Yeah, yeah, our normal is a work session with the decision the next day and I would prefer that in case.
But it's a, it's a big deal to, so, so we'll, yeah, let's do that. We'll do the work session on the Thursday, I think we'll take we that and then the meeting and we'll formalize it on, uh,
Are you gonna have another meeting in Northern Lake County?
No. I mean, oh, lots of meetings up there myself, but I don't, well, there may be, the state may wanna go up there and do another meeting. I don't think Obsidian is gonna do another one. I don't know what the state is gonna do. The last meeting they held, it was a complete disaster, so I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna, I don't know what they're gonna wanna do there.
Be good to have representatives of the taxing districts.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I mean, we're kicking around some things. We may go up there and do a, a, just an Obsidian meeting, you know, kind of tell people about the project, especially after we get this signed up, so we'll have something to talk about, you know? People always like to talk about taxes and so forth. Hopefully you guys will have your agreement with the taxing districts in place. Sounds like it's gonna be a pretty simple agreement if you're just gonna split pro rata. So they can, they can talk to their, you know, to their people, you know, to their neighbors about what each taxing, taxing district's gonna get. I think, um, you know, if we do this deal, Northlake Health's gonna get a hundred and forty-two thousand a year. Well, I think their total budget right now is like two fifty or something like that, three hundred. So, you know, all of these taxing districts will get a huge bump up there. Once we get this thing going. So it'll give us, give them all, good things to talk about up there. I said, we're excited about it. It's a huge rock to push, you know, put the size of this project, but we're pushing it on.
And this isn't fair to ask, 'cause you probably don't have any idea. Have you got any indications from the state and the EFC process?
About approval?
This move forward and approval?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, they, they give us feedback all the way through the process, so they don't wanna have a bunch of problems after you turn it in. So they get every study that we do, we send it in. So when we send in a completed application, it's really all the completed studies. So we're in constant contact and negotiation and, you know, EFC people kinda act almost like a mediator between us, like us and the tribes, and us and ODFW, you know, when we're doing our mitigation strategy. So, so, yeah, they don't wanna, to get an application that they're gonna have to deny. So we have all of that muddened up before we do something. Those are our processes, we may review it. They might have a few comments or a few things for you to tidy up, but it's pretty, pretty much on track for approval.
I guess, just elaborated a little bit, the process going through EFC is very, very strict, I guess. There's a lot of compliance that you have to prove and move forward with, cultural, wildlife.
Yeah, so we've done, we've done all cultural studies. We've done three different wildlife studies, including, we had some mitigation study plans. We've done noise studies, we've done earthquake studies, we've done environmental studies. We've done other many studies. We had to study the sound effects of the, of the line that we're gonna put in. We've done geothermal, I mean, not geothermal, geotech boring on the site. We considered the resistivity of the soil. We've done, we're gonna do an emissions study to determine the amount of emissions of the trucks bringing the solar panels from Portland to the site. We've had to do two different water studies, just figure out how much water we're gonna use, what's evaporation, what's the runoff of it. We've had to do a, we've had to do a heat study. We did a heat study to determine how much dissipated heat is gonna be, could be generated from the, from the modules to kick off. We've done a DEQ study to determine, try to determine how much dust and what our dust abatement, your program is gonna look like. There's a few other studies in there, too. I basically can't remember off the top of my head, but crazy amount of stuff. Oh, and then we gotta pay them, the EFC, Department of Energy, a four hundred thousand dollar fee to review our application. And then we gotta pay them thirty thousand dollars a year, every year, for the life of the project, to take the book out of the desk and tick the boxes and make sure that the project is knowing what they said.
Darren, are our planning and building fees are way under what they should be?
I'm so sneaky to that.
I would bet Darwin.
I'd spark this group over here.
No, you sparked that group.
I would bet that Darwin could use thirty thousand dollars a year in his office.
Pennsylvania for December first.
Yeah, yeah.
Fourth or fifth.
So actually, you know, it's funny that you say that, because there is a movement afoot with local planning commissioners. I think Darwin's part of this.
He's a regulator.
Yeah, that, part of the discussion to, to kinda pull, for solar, anyway, to pull back the jurisdiction to the local jurisdiction.
For the audience, because we keep using the acronym ESE, explain for the audience on camera that you're monitoring to.
The, EFC is the Energy Facility Siding Council. It's ran by the Department of Energy and State Department of Energy. And for every, under state rules, if your solar project is on three hundred and twenty acres or more, you have to go through the Energy Facility Siding Council, which is a state process that, basically, they're meant to be the corral of all of the other state agencies. ODFW and.
All jurisdictional.
SHPO, everybody that can, you know, have jurisdictions over the, over the site to, you know, to pull that application together. That's, and that's your land use process, instead of going through the county conditional use permit process. So in my mind, nobody in their right mind would go through EFC voluntarily. So that's one of the reasons why our site, our solar project at Airport, is three hundred and fifteen acres and not three hundred and one-one acres.
And not that, I mean, whenever, I'm not sure when your varnish is done, but it might be worth taking a minute to talk about those issues of what's going on at EFC, because they're a substantial concern to the counties, and some changes afoot that are concerning. So I don't wanna interrupt Mr. Gregory, but if you guys wanna take a moment for that, I think we're talking about.
Yeah. So they're trying to, and we're part of the, we're gonna be part of the process during this next legislative session to enact some law, try to get some laws enacted, to pull that jurisdiction, most of that jurisdiction back to the county.
Well, I believe for several years, we're going to be seeing this because solar, as you said, nine, ten years ago, is the biggest project. Now, it's, we're talking four hundred. At that time, there was no discussion anything outside. With that said, the state, the counties, we're all, a lot of this is new process. It's literally breaking new ground and legislators.
Lake County now has ten years of experience with solar going the land use side. So EFC has done one project. One, one solar project with EFC. So I would argue that EFC now is just, you guys know just as much about EFC than about the process of EFC.
So the EFC process, just in that everybody's here, there's opportunity for public to comment during EFC process?
Yes, there are.
Pro R Con?
Throughout. You can send them comments. If you go on to their website, our project is on their website. You can go through, look at every, every piece of correspondence that's sent in, pro R Con about the project. You can look at the, I think most of the studies are available, if you wanna go and pour through those. It's a very transparent process, open process. We're glad that we, we don't mind addressing issues on the land use side, so you can publicly comment through that. They do take it seriously, they look at every single comment, and they, they call us, ask us questions about it.
Okay, my idea is go along, we're gonna take this under consideration. We'll move it to work session and possible decision on Wednesday, the first meeting in December.
Appreciate that.
So, are there anything else, or commissioner, any questions?
On the wildlife strategy, the county asks you to address the adforce effects to certain species, correct?
Yes.
I was a wildlifeologist for many, many years, and I always turn the page and address the beneficial effect to water. Anytime you do anything, you add force effect one, but beneficial effect no. So I'm very concerned about institutions.
Yes. Don't say that too loud, it'll make us study.
That's the beneficial use.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Friends of the Library are here. We're gonna move back up and into to that. Welcome, grab another chair there, please.
Hey, don't freeze, Joe.
Oh, thanks. I was thinking about just letting go. Okay.
We're gonna borrow the screen. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Amy Hutchins, the library director, and Margot Dodd, Friends of the Library, and Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and Lily. And so do you wanna give an update on where we're at with Dolly?
Well, our, this flyer, and I'm not exactly sure, because I didn't write it off.
I know.
Sixty. Well, the sixty-three percent registered for Lake County, including sixty-six percent of children in North Lake County, which is wonderful.
And our, the Imagination Library is a, and for those in the room who I don't know how you would've missed it at this point, but it's a program for zero to five, where local communities partner with the Imagination Library Foundation, which is a part of the Dollywood Foundation for Dolly Parton. And the children under five in a geographic area get mailed one book a month until their fifth birthday, and it costs communities twenty-five dollars per child per year, which is very reasonable for the quality of books they're being sent.
And it's no cost to the family ever and they're never solicited, and they're named just.
Yes. And for, when we were preparing for the program to kind of know what kind of money we needed to bring in, the Imagination Library Regional Director for our area said, well, you know, usually the first year, you're doing pretty good. If you get twenty, maybe, maybe forty percent registration the first year. We started in January, and we're at sixty-three percent for the county, which is a testament to Lake County's commitment to education, I think. So we've served, actually, so you can see the first column is enrolled by area, which is, allows us to kind of make sure we're getting equitably across the county and if we need to focus our efforts differently. So we've got two hundred and five kids enrolled. And then at the very bottom, you can see we've graduated twenty-four that started the program in their last year of eligibility, so they already turned five. So we've served almost two hundred and thirty kids out of the three hundred and twenty-six that are available in the county. We're fortunate, these first three years, the Oregon Family Foundation's covering half the cost. And then you generously gave the program a thousand dollar donation. We wanted to show you how well your funds are doing for Lake County's kids. And the way the Friends' recognition program works, that enables Lake County to be thanked on the mailing labels for free mailings. So I wanted to see, would you like that recognition to be sent out there for free mailings?
I, I don't know that we, I don't think we need the recognition. I think the program speaks for itself. I, I don't.
We're, we're about.
Okay. All right, well, then we will.
We support all things we can, and we don't really expect recognition other than basically by word.
My only problem with it is that I find myself looking at little kids, trying to figure out if they're under five and approaching their parents about, you know, have they signed up? I signed up, somebody at the Seruptum's Oktoberfest, walking around with a little bacon. He said, no, they haven't. Black Park Imagination Library.
My best story is I recently met a new mother who had said she had a six-month-old child, and I said, oh, well, have you signed up for the Imagination Library? She says, yes, Margot was my nurse, and she signed me up there in the hospital. And then do you guys have any questions about the program, or?
So this is the start of the second year, correct?
January will be the start of the second year.
And your, so your funding for those three years is good?
Well, we have about seven thousand in the fund right now. And then we're gonna start at the year end, we're gonna mail everyone the gate before and see if they would like to give again, coming up here in the next month or so. Yeah, and do you wanna tell about the Clark Foundation?
Oh, there was a man in Portland gave me a call out of the blue and, and said he read in the Lake County Examiner about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and he was the director of the Clark Foundation. And his wife was from Lakeview, Laura Burling. So he is the director, and he could make a choice as to, oh, yes, we would love it. And we talked for a little while, and they sent us a check with fifteen hundred, twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Wow.
So it's really wonderful. But, I mean, you can't really fault the program, except for if you don't want to read your child.
Yes.
It could be a nuisance, because the child is gonna. And then wanna read it again, but that's, you know.
Age classes, and I've got a passion for that age class, too. Plus, that's what the kids get at campus, so.
Thank you.
And they come up?
Appreciate the update on that. Appreciate seeing you in court, bro, down there.
Thank you for looking for it.
And.
Amazing.
It is very amazing. And then I also brought, the library just did a strategic plan, which you may or may not wish to read in great detail for your fund. But one thing I do wanna for sure call your attention to is the last section, starting on page.
Page numbers.
Page numbers, yes, are in the top.
Okay.
Top right-hand corner. Top left-hand corner, thank you, the other right. On page fourteen, there's a section, the community analysis. I know it can be difficult for all of us with our two incorporated communities to get good statistics. So we made a good effort to put a lot of good data together. And I think, I'll email it to Melanie, if she doesn't mind, and anybody who, you can just email it to everybody, and whoever wants a copy can save one. And if you want a printed copy, let me know, I'm happy to make one. But some of the things that we found, you know, that, that we knew sort of anecdotally, but didn't always have a handle on, on page fifteen, the population by area, North Lake versus South Lake, which is based on the health district boundaries. The North Lake population is growing substantially, and has almost doubled since nineteen ninety. And the South Lake has dwindled a bit. I think that might change in the next couple of years with Red Rock and all of that. And then we did some projections on page sixteen about where we think we might be in the next twenty and fifty years. I mean, of course, the farther out you go, the, the less, you know, the, the less you can pinpoint it exactly. But these are based on the Portland State University Population Research Center, does the annual, not the annual, is it every five years? Oh, is that annually?
They do, yes, annually.
Well, they do the annual populations, but they also do forecasts, so.
It's every four years.
Is it four-year survey? And so we kind of went with the Lake County one for the South Lake areas that are on the chart, but kind of, you know, North Lake is caught in the tailwind of Deschutes County's growth. And so we made some adjustments based on the Deschutes County numbers for our projections, which we also use for our needs assessment for a new library to be founded in the future. And so, you know, we can see there's gonna be quite a bit of growth still up there. And the part, again, I think the projections for here might not be quite right with some of the new things going on. The other thing that is not surprising to anyone is we have an aging population. So our, our percentages of people over sixty in general are higher, and our percentages of people between twenty-five and forty-five are lower on page seventeen. And our educational attainment is quite good, given especially our economic characteristics. So I think that's something we can be proud of as accounting. And then one of the ones that was a great surprise to me was on page twenty is the poverty and income rates by area. So in, in the chart there, you've got North Lake, South Lake, rural, and Oregon. So we start on the right with Oregon. The percent of people below the federal poverty line is supposed to be about eighteen, and below two hundred percent of poverty line, which is a threshold for a lot of income assistance programs for people on low incomes. It's a little less than forty percent. Rural's a little bit higher, so a little closer to twenty and right at forty percent. And then for the southern part of Lake County, about the same on the poverty line, but almost fifty percent at low income. And then if you go to North Lake, it's over twenty percent at poverty line and sixty percent low. And then if you go to North Lake, it's over twenty percent at poverty line and sixty percent low income. We knew that was true, but this really shows that we weren't making it up. It isn't, it's not true and might influence how we provide services up there in general. And then we're fortunate because unlike most of the rest of the state, at least our housing is still affordable, so that's a win. And our unemployment rates are in twenty eighteen, um, lower than they were before the recession. So that's something also to tell us. And then back at the beginning is the library piece of it, and I won't talk a lot about that, but we did a, you know, we are, we are in the position and maybe, maybe with the earlier discussion, it might go along better in the future, but as you well know, the purse rates have been increasing and the health insurance costs have been increasing and the tax base has not been increasing at the same amount. So we're getting to the point where it's gonna, you know, we've, we've done all the, we've had wonderful friends come and reformed and raised money and helped supplement our book buying budget. And we reconfigured our staffing to be more efficient when people retire and all of those things. But we're kind of getting to the point where there's not much left to finagle. So we needed to know what the community valued most about our services so that as we go forward, we can use those to plan for how we, how we do. And unsurprisingly, Lake County children will be ready for kindergarten was a key goal for community members who came to our meeting to tell us what's important about the library. And so there's a whole variety of things we're doing with those, that Lake County residents will explore ideas through engaging stories and lifelong learning. So that's our fiction and our nonfiction collection. People can learn through nonfiction titles, but also through reading stories about other people's lives or other places. That's personally how I live to learn about history is historical fiction. The Lake County residents will have high-speed access to the digital world. You know, both in the fact that it, there are a number of residences that it is impossible to get broadband at and with the economic constraints, the library is a key place that a lot of people connect, either to the internet with their own device or come and use the computers to apply for jobs or connect with their family on Facebook or any of those things. And we'll continue doing that for sure. And then the Lake County residents will have comfortable spaces to connect with each other and the wider world. There's, you know, the library's a place for everyone, I like to say. And so we have lots of community members come in, they use our meeting rooms or they, they often, there's no meeting room in Christmas Valley, but they, they're so spread out up there, they love to come to the library and visit with their neighbors and their friends where they see people. Whereas when they're at home, five miles from anybody, they're not going to be able to sit down and, and visit. And then we have a couple organizational goals in order to carry out our mission. We need to have financial sustainability and promote the library so people know what we provide to the community. So as we go through the next eighteen months or so, we're kind of going to quantify where our financial gaps are and then have some community conversations about how those get filled. So I hope that maybe someone from this board might be willing to be a part of that. And then the next section is just kind of a portrait of the library and a little bit of library history and trends in general. Library use, when the recession hits, library use increased dramatically in the nation because as people had fewer resources, they maybe stopped buying books at home and started using the library or came to the library to do job searching, all of those things. So there was a big upswing and then as the recovery happened, that use has tapered back to normal. So a couple of our, our graphs look like we're doing badly, but it's because we're on the, on the curve of returning to normal. But we are having pretty steady use overall, following the national trends in most cases, except on, in the nation, program attendance is generally on the rise. We're sort of level and it fluctuates depending, depending on, we have a, we're a member of a library group that writes grants to provide programs to rural libraries. So depending on how successful that group has been lately in bringing programs, it impacts the number of programs that they're able to offer. But we do have about thirty-five hundred registered library users in Lake County, so about forty-two percent. And we know from being in the library, often there's one card for the whole family. So that those thirty-five hundred cards is serving more people than that. We have about thirty-seven thousand five hundred visits to our libraries annually.
Is that north and south?
That's all four, yeah. So Lakeview, Paisley, Silver Lake, Christmas Valley, all combined. But then you can see on page ten, there's a chart of visits per open hour. So everybody, every branch has different hours. So you can kind of see how many people come into each library per open hour. And I think one key thing is Lake has a lot more space than the other places. So, so we get, and we have a lot more population condensed around where the library exists physically. So we have the most visits per open hour, but once we get to the point of doing a new facility in Christmas Valley, I think that will jump substantially there as well.
Is that by percentage of the population in that area or is it by numbers?
So this is by how many bodies walked in per hour the library was open.
Okay, so it actually may, it may not reflect the sort of percentage of the population that goes to the library when it's open.
That's correct, yes. Last year, well, twenty sixteen, seventeen, because when we did this, twenty-seven to eighteen numbers weren't available yet. But about forty-seven thousand items were checked out. So that could be a book, a movie, an ebook, an audiobook that you can download straight to your device for when you're driving. And so that's about an average of almost six items per person over the year, which is pretty good for a rural area. In the, generally when you have high population density, you have higher library use. When you have low population density, you have lower per capita use because people have to come farther, so they come less often. Most popular fiction books for adults, videos for adults and youth picture books. So those are the most popular things that people come and check out. And then we have books from the adult shelves, book fiction and nonfiction. So people sometimes think, oh, you know, who reads anymore? Everyone's on the internet. Well, I would like to tell you a lot of people read, so. And then our public computers, we have twelve in Lakeview, six for adults, three for teens and two for elementary. And then a laptop that we use to provide help that's right near the circulation desk. Christmas Valley has five computers, Paisley has two and a laptop, and then Silver Lake has two. We've seen a lot more devices come into the library, so people want to bring around and just use the wifi. We're fortunate, we're also connected to Hunter here in Lakeview, so we get great speed all the time. That is something we need to work on as speed issues for the branches over the next five years. And thanks to some work that's been done here, we have, going to have more options, so that's wonderful. And then our programs that we offer for the public, we have our summer reading program every year for the kids. Kids need to read about ten hours over the summer so that they don't lose their reading skills between school years. So we have weekly programs in the summer, we have our storytime programs every week in Lakeview. And then we, that goes out to the Head Start and whatever local preschools would like us to come once a month. And then we have a volunteer in Paisley and we just found a volunteer for Christmas Valley to do storytimes in those libraries. So those are great. And then for those, we have a variety of programs. We had, last week Larry LeClaire has written a book. He's a local author, you may know him, he's a corrections officer in the prison. So we had a reading and book signing and had a small crowd and some surprised family members come. We've had, you know, artists come and present, we've had wildlife managers come and present information to the public. So it's just a wide variety. And if anyone, you know, has a great idea for a program, then we're always willing to see if we can make something happen in that regards. So I think that's kind of the summary of where we're at and the plan. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Quite enlightening, honestly, is everything there, having a strategic, strategic plan for twenty eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, should, when you're applying for grants and everything, if you have this done, you can check that box. It moves you up further.
It sure does, that's true.
And it doesn't matter, probably a pretty good cost bill to have this put together and everything also, they don't come for free.
No, we got a Ford Family, Ford Family Foundation Technical Assistance Grant, so we covered about half the cost. And we were smart because our, the consultant we chose the strategic and facility plan. So we, we got the needs assessment for the space for Christmas Valley done with the same travel cost of doing the strategic planning. So it worked out very well.
So maybe we've been talking payment, lived taxes and taxation and everything. So like the SIF agreement up in North Lake, we create substantial amount for the library. Would that money be used as a general budgeting purpose or is it, would that be specific for North Lake?
So I think that we have, I mean, that'd be really a decision for the library board. But there's, you know, there's some, some, at the moment, we've, with our Ruby money, we financed to part of the cost of the building, raised about two and a half million dollars. But then we had about one and a, one point two that we financed to be able to get over there and move in. And, and then, you know, it's, it's a very energy-efficient building. I actually pay almost the same as the percentage that we paid over here for utilities. And that's ten thousand square feet versus what, thirty, two hundred, thirty-three hundred when we were over here in this exact space. But we do have more computers, so we have a, you know, our technology costs are higher, we have an elevator. So now we have to have that maintained and extra phone lines. And so all of those little bits with the debt service together kind of have captured all of the Ruby payments. So there's not, there's not extra of that around.
Looking in your graph here, you've come together.
We have come together.
You are there.
We are there and hopefully we stay there. And so there's, you know, there's things we should be doing that we're not able to do at the moment budgetarily with setting aside money for computer replacements and, you know, we, we did not, all, all of our buildings, except Silver Lake, have been other-owned until we built this one. And so we, we never had to save money to put a roof on again in another twenty-five years. And so there's those costs that we need to be setting aside. So I don't know how the, the strategic investment program funds will end up being used. I think the, the board and I'll have to sit down and see kind of where our.
It wouldn't hurt to need to have extra dollars.
And no, it's not going to hurt at all to have extra dollars at all. It's going to be, I was telling Ann, I was like, this is good news. So yeah, but I, I can't say, yeah, how, you know, say exactly.
And that's, that's a few years down the road, I'm waiting for it, for that would happen. You have everything to take care of between now and then.
Yeah, well, and we do periodically do an, an internal assessment to kind of compare, using the school district taxable values to make sure, you know, that the service is somewhat equitable for taxes being put into the district. And at the moment, it, it looks like Lakeview's a bit carrying things, but more of the costs are here for the building now, so it's pretty balanced. The Paisley School District and the North Lake School District, we actually spend a little bit more than we receive in tax money to provide those services, which seems reasonable. But then when, when this comes into town, that, you know, that would change the formula, so.
Do you have a, a board and they do the budgeting and you guys do that?
Yep, we will.
Any other questions? Any other, forward? Thank you ladies very much.
Thank you.
And I'll take this home with me.
Okay, good.
Looks very successful on the Dolly Parton.
Yeah, it's, it's going well. If anybody knows a, a little kid between zero and five, you can sign up online, it takes about fifteen seconds. Some of, some of them have graduated.
I have my own right now, we can sign up right now.
We're, we're going to take a five-minute break. It's going to be a long day, so five-minute break, we'll be back.
Here, I'm going to leave you some.
All the checks have cleared, we can go back to the, just go and do it.
Because it's a public.
It's like, what's going on?
Yes, yes. And it's just my impression, I don't have that many.
Hopefully it comes back.
I tried to do it, people think that was a great song.
Virtually all of them.
And then, no, I'm, I'm starting out.
So they just turn them, they just work a lot. I like it. I briefly filled Brad on lessons, but you might roll here.
Tyler, were you the president?
Yeah.
No, I was.
Starting to distract you? Yeah, the vitamins don't know stuff.
I liked the wine baking. I kind of, like, where are we at in glasses? Like, what's your taste? Sunday or Sunday, Sunday. And then part. Do you have an email? Are you on the email list? Like if I send it to Melanie, does it come to you for the strategic plan? Well, or if we just.
She can make it, I'm not going to ask her.
Oh, well, that's easy. Well, you'll be on the, all, all people listening, you did great. Do you do this annually? I should, I think you should, yes, you're right. It's totally correct, especially now that we have a strategic plan and they can update that when we hang on. That'll be good. Okay, well, I, thanks.
Do you need anything? So I checked the mail on Thursday, Friday, so I'll check again, but it's, it's coming in there, so hopefully more stuff is coming to you.
Yeah, I do have a number of things. I don't know, like, it says clear mail, you have a box forty-four and they keep going to bring it to the library, so.
Anyways, I have about four gallons of juice.
So what I do, and it's up to you, if you want to come and pull out some, and then I, I can lock them. But generally what we've done. And that way I've covered my butt that. Okay.
She keeps calling her mom and Portugal and asking her. I need to find it from my girl.
You should call stringers.
You should call stringers.
I did.
So how long can you wait before you get it?
I think I gotta wait a little bit.
Yeah, 'cause it's got it for me, it's got it for me anyway.
Only, only time I ever tried to count them all is when I was, I was...
It's on your side, you didn't, but I just, yeah.
I had thirty-four years to seal.
You know, and, uh, I know, you know how I found out?
Woo! I was lying to my mom, Portugal staying there, I tried to figure it out. I'm like, that makes it, that'd be just a nasty whole story. But how sloppy work, I should be embarrassed while I work, while I work, yes, it's, it's sloppy, I can't... You let them wait for that, just, oh, in honor or not, so I called back to talk.
They don't want to do any of that.
So does it have to, like, the wine barrel can be sealed?
Well, so you gotta work on the process.
Yeah, just doing the same thing on researches.
So, am I going through that for the signs?
Okay.
So, I have a fire waiting on, so...
I'm just signing.
Okay, okay.
Well, we cut your time and have a wait.
That's fine, but you give me 10% of what I make through the law. You tell that, okay.
Ken?
A barrel.
Want some coffee?
From my office?
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
This is legit?
Yeah.
Y'all done?
The little off sheet, couple of girls.
Yeah, the sisters?
Yeah, they're well, there's just enough, nothing there.
So my new friends, man stepping in and then slipping out of the house when they're here. So I know, I've ate, um, some grapes and stuff.
I'm closer to lunch, but I'm...
And it's a base, we just won, and I think...
I haven't finished my first, I'm sitting on Victoria, I'm sitting on the little meeting table in my... It's a huge dog, there is...
Huh?
She's handsome.
Yes, it's not there. And it's protected, time, it's in the middle of the week.
Uh, they, I didn't know about it, I just found out about it twenty minutes ago, they scheduled that for next Tuesday.
Okay, it's, uh, five minutes till eleven, come back in the session.
Sounds good, they're supposed to be screening today too.
And get back on to our agenda.
Right, very good.
Okay.
Or... Well, okay, we're, we're back in the session. At this time, we've had no comments on the hearing. And we're going to close that hearing at five minutes to eleven with no comments received. And there will be another hearing on the 29th, correct? All right. So, Mr. Andrews, you are next with the construction contract. Do you have other updates too?
Yes.
Okay. So, get it, get it fast, how's that sent?
All right, sounds good.
Until I get the document, it'll slow down, you guys don't have to tell me.
So we got the, uh, signed contract back from Alex Hodge. And, um, basically, we, we just need signatures from the county now to finalize that, so we can press forward on the airport, um, rehab and beacon project.
Okay, so this, uh, the, them being the contractor that already approved, correct?
Correct.
Correct, and so this is just the actual contract itself?
Correct.
Okay. So, they, they were approved as the, one that is in compliance with our advertisement, so...
Right.
I'm rifling through my stuff, looking for it. Do you have a permission? Is it open for a...
That's for Alex Hodge, right?
Correct, yeah. Do you need this one, right?
I think I found it. So, uh, this is, uh, the total contract ta, excuse me, the total contract price, 1.5?
Yeah, 1.596?
Or 18? Okay, so, uh, I'll move to accept the contract that's before us, between Lake County and Alex Hodge Construction LLC. And you did, Dave did this, or you before legal counsel, I'm sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do you have a copy for us to sign?
I think it's...
Okay, all right. So with that, you have a department update, or several possible department updates. And just, uh, Dave will be back later on this week, he's off for some personal things this week. Thank you for being here to do the presentation.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Yeah, and, uh, probably the first update is on this, um, the pavement rehab and beacon project that we're on. As we talked about before, the, the original, um, plan was to pave around the, uh, tee hangers as well, and then put it in the security bins. The, the cost of both of the bins we got for this project were way over what we expected. So there was about a $600,000 deficiency there. The FAA, uh, had another grant for us, we applied for that grant, but the round one, we did not get the grant. And, but the FAA came back and said that, um, after reviewing their, their grant approvals, they realized that, um, all of the monies in round one had gone to large airports, and there was no smaller airports on the list. Lake County's one of the, I think, one of three, if I remember right, in the state of Oregon are on that list.
On the small ones.
On, on the small ones, right. No, no airports in Oregon were awarded anything. So, I believe it's, um, I think it's March, if I remember right. They're, they're coming up for round two, and there's a really good chance that, uh, we'll be on that list fairly hot now, 'cause they said that, uh, where, where nobody would award, uh, who was the small airports, we're, we're gonna give it a second chance at that. So, there's still a chance we'll get that extra paving and security bins in. It just, um, we have to wait for that process, setting them around, see how it goes.
And so, um, would you have to go back out for another RFP or anything, or just falls right into the funding coming in? Maybe they'll add it on?
That, I don't know, everything's already approved. The FAA and all that stuff is approved for the other sections, the add-ons. So, um, if, if we do get awarded that, then I'm sure we'll have to go back. Um, we're probably gonna have to go back out for, for that as well, 'cause...
That was contingent upon funding all those, or...
Yeah, yeah, that was, uh, there was an A, B, C, and D section. All of A, which is the original grant that we got with the, um, federal and state grant. All of that's getting done, that's what the Alex Hodge, uh, contract is right now. The others are, are basically been pulled aside and separated. The FAA was, was happy to allow us to do that, they said that's fine. Everything's still there, all the surveys, every, all the studies are done, so it's just a matter of them, uh, awarding another grant. Carry that on, but then they will...
Yeah, and the process, that's almost a year later, so the prices would change on fuel, paving and all that stuff, so the appropriate, probably, whatever the guidelines tell us.
Yeah, we'll have to go back out. Yep. So, that's that. Um, we have, uh, uh, the Forest Service, uh, Seat Base and, and Hella Base, they requested a, to put in a new well out there for two reasons. Quality of water and, and the old well, and, uh, they want a larger well so that they can produce more water and get, uh, a timelier, uh, return on the fuel to retardant mixture. So, they, they did get the grant, and it's been approved, so it's just a matter of, uh, you know, I told them I would come before the commission and, and request and, and see if there was any, you know, objection to them putting a larger well out there on their leased facility.
So, the, the first thing I would say is, great, we need that. If they were to never lease from us or be out there anymore, that well would become our property. That has to be talked about ahead of time, any improvements and all that. And you probably should also make sure that those improvements include the pump, the pump house, or however it's set up, that that becomes county ownership if they dissolve the agreement with us there.
Okay.
And with that, the water rights probably would have to transfer, whatever. I can't speak to that any at all, the water master, check with the water master, make sure the county's protected. We don't look for them to go away, but at the end of the day, if they go away, that's our traditional way that we work on our, our leased, our rented property is, improvements like that become ownership of the county, preferably. Where they went out for a grant, they, they have to make sure that that fits within that grant also. So that's something I would check with them about, make sure that, that's upfront. It's, I'd hate for them to walk away and then they pour it full of cement and we don't have access to it.
Okay. All right, well, then I'll take care of that today, I'll call Barry and make sure that we get those, we could work out.
Yeah, in writing, yeah.
In writing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and you, have you heard any updates on their, the joint, um, contract?
So they're still having to go through different processes there about, um... So what, what is, what is the scenario? I think it's, it's BLM money that is being used on a Forest Service facility. And so there's, and it's going up higher levels on what needs to happen according to that lease agreement, if they really should split it into two, so you have both agencies leasing it, and then both of their dollars are always available to go, or just making some kind of agreement up higher that is okay for those dollars to flow back and forth. But in the same time, they're looking at expanding the footprint of the lease. But even saying it that way, you can see how complicated it's, it's...
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of complicated, but it, what I was thinking was, if, if we're in the process of writing a new lease, if they're not gonna, to wanna rush this well, maybe we can get it all done at the same time, and if not, then I'll, I'll get it in writing separate for the well, so that we have that, uh, taken care of.
And we don't want them to not do a well.
Right.
But, uh, talk with them, find out what their guidelines are, what, you know... And make each other the water master too, make sure that they can get the right permit to build. There's a lot of rules around drilling wells nowadays, and I'm sure they're going through the right process, but I can give you the... Learn a little bit if you talk with Brian, Brian Watermaster.
Okay.
Make sure to follow up on that.
Okay. Let me see if there was a, I have a couple of notes here, I wanna make sure this... Oh, and then the last thing is our, our, um, we did receive the whole $150,000 grant from, core grant from the state for our electrical and, and plumbing upgrades. So, um, this coming spring will be looking at putting in a emergency generator system that will run the airport lighting and, and all the electrical for the facilities out there in case of power failure. So, the big, the big plus there is emergency services. If we have an airplane come in, in the night to pick someone up and the place is completely out, without power, we'd be, we would have no way to live in Atlanta. So now, you know, I, I, after this coming spring, we'll have that ability out there too. It will just automatically kick on and those lights will go. Fuel sales will continue, 'cause we've had multiple times over the years where we've had to put in nodums, uh, you know, so the pilots know that there was no fuel available, and...
Because of lack of power.
Because of lack of power, correct, and that's, that will totally take care of that, yeah, so...
Excellent.
Well, and we have, we've had to, we've had to literally pump five, five-gallon cans of fuel at a time to get people that have landed there back to where they need to go. So, you know, that's, that's kind of in desperation, you know, we pump it and let them put it in their aircraft, but, but it got them where they needed to be, we don't wanna have to do that anymore. I mean, it's just, it's just...
Just a question, we have the truck out there, we use that fuel on the truck, is it not capable of fueling whenever we're out of power?
That's only jet fuel.
Only jet fuel?
Yeah, only jet fuel, so take care of that. But any of our, you know, general aviation airplanes and helicopters flying through, they, they could get... In fact, one, it would have been four or five hours, I would have been sitting there, and nightfall was coming, and they were, they weren't, uh, too pleased that they were stuck in the, in the middle of nowhere, basically, in their minds, so...
Not the middle of nowhere, it's the outback.
Yeah, the outback.
No, they finally did it up somewhere, and that's it.
So, yeah. So, but that's good, that's, I mean, that, that whole scenario will go away with the electrical upgrades.
Well, the, that grant through Regional Solutions from Business Oregon is, is huge. And, uh, and I know Dave has got an opportunity, we all need to make sure and let, uh, not leave it with Governor's Office and Larry Holt being Business Oregon, know how much we appreciate that, because we actually, um, we're very fortunate, some people done a lot of work on this.
Yeah.
That's, that's a huge thing for us, and, uh, that's a pretty good thing.
Yeah, it's great.
Yep.
It's wonderful, it really kind of tops off the development that's going on out there. You know, supporting and sustaining things.
Yep.
And, um, I said last thing, didn't I, but I got one more that I just thought of.
Okay, yes.
And, uh, if you guys, uh, I'll give you this here, so you know what I'm talking about, but... Right there, this is... I, uh, had a meeting, uh, about three, two weeks ago now, I guess, with the, with the FAA and the State Aviation Board. And what they were requesting was that we update the, uh, our five-year plan to show, uh, up through 2024. We had nothing on our master plan for 2024 as far as the, our next project in place. So, um, 2021 and 22, the parallel taxiway will be the project that will be the focus alongside the runway to the east with their new commercial development. In 2023, there's gonna be a, a gap there. And then in 2024, what I have requested was that the new parking area for the new, uh, facility be put to the east to support, you know, um, any of the commercial traffic just coming into parking. So, that, where I highlighted number 23 there, that is already on our master plan. And the FAA is good with all that infrastructure being done, and they can see a problem with being able to, to get the funds to, to put that parking area in. So that gives us tie-down for probably another 12 to 14 aircraft. And what I also requested was that in the grant, we would be able to put in a larger fuel farm at that location. So eventually, all the commercial facilities would be supported by that fuel farm over there on that side. The FAA, when it comes to the actual fuel farm, the fuel tanks, they're hesitant. They, they said that unless there's no other, um, project needs, they wouldn't fund those tanks. But what they would do is they would fund everything under the tanks, so the cement, the electrical, everything to support that. So, um, that would just give us the ability to really have a good storage area. And with the large hangar that is on the plan there, decided, if we ever get that built or have a company come in and, and want to build a, you know, a hundred by a hundred hangar there, that would, that would completely support that, that new FBO right there, so...
And your new generator gonna feed that area?
Um, it should be able to, yeah. Yeah, because, uh, we're gonna be feeding the runway lights and everything with it, so I don't see a problem with having that over there.
We have to increase your contract.
Yeah, yeah, but when that project's put in, that'll have to be laid, but I don't see why that, that would be an issue there. So, so that's, that's our 2024 plan, we've added that to it. The FAA is, is, uh, accepted that, and, uh, that's been put on, uh, the Oregon, um, aircraft site as well, so that our plan is updated with the state at the same time. Just to kind of keep everybody looped, and hopefully our, our grants will continue to flow the way they have, and we'll, uh...
What do you have going with plumbing, water system?
The, the water and the plumbing is part of that, the $150,000 grant that we just got, so... So that is, when we do the electrical, there's also plans to do the more improvements to the well and the plumbing system. We ended up having a failure that we were gonna replace with the grant. It ended up failing a few weeks ago, so, but there's still lots of development that needs to be done out there as far as the plumbing goes. The restroom needs to be updated and taken care of, so that money's going to be put to use at the far end of, of, you know, of the plumbing system.
Very good.
And I think that's about it.
All right. Show me where you need these signed, get them signed.
I'll, I'll.
Every man. Any other thing that shows for sure?
I have them added, and then there's blacks for the dates.
That's showing witness.
Okay, so this is, it is not.
And I don't see where it shows a place for Lake County.
The Lake County sign there?
So go ahead and get, get them back to Melanie, make sure we get it signed in the appropriate place.
Okay.
I'd hate to jeopardize one point by a million by not signing correctly.
Missing that spot, yeah, exactly, okay.
I didn't see, I seen a place for witness to sign, I didn't see. So with that, work with Melanie. And so running on down the agenda here, is Paul going to come in?
Um, I can take, take it if he's not available. Um, recently, we discussed the fingerprint machine. That, sorry. The fingerprint machine in the jail isn't down, it's utilized by many people, not just the jail. It's a service that we provide to the public. Initially, they said it was going to be $50,000 to replace, but we worked around it and we're using some existing equipment, so it's going to be $23,000 and $892, more than new software and scanner that we'll need. It's going to come out of his materials and services budget, although he did not anticipate this breaking down, so at the end of the year, he might need a contingency.
Okay, so I, I visited with you and with Sheriff and with Paul on this. And I assured them that it's been a year of their budget through both categories, materials and service, and through the wages, if there's not enough money to cover this, that the Board of Commissioners will, by resolution, go to contingency to pay for this. I just want to make sure we're comfortable for them that, that is where we're at. So this money will be taken out of their budget at the end of the year. If that forces their budget over their normal operations, we will do a resolution that'll contingency. And that's exactly the way that it should work?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the cost of $23,893 for the fingerprint machine as presented.
Sorry.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. OLCC permit, this is to ratify, this is the temporary sales license permit that came in, which a lot of these have to be ratified because the timeframe people bring them in. This is between, or this is for Ross and Kelly McGarva. And I am looking, I was signed by one of the Commissioner Dan Chalmers. And so I'll move to ratify the temporary sales license for Ross and Kelly McGarva as presented.
Yeah, second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Mr. Greer, community action contract, sir.
Community action. So last year, we entered an agreement with the community plan to play community action services for energy assistance. So folks get referred to class, community action. And they go through the energy assistance criteria, and if they met the criteria for energy assistance, they were asked then at that time if they wanted assistance with electrical heat bill, monitoring oil or firewood. If they, if folks choose firewood, they send the referral to us, our work with us on this, firewood and the wood. The contract also calls for it anywhere from $125 to $115 to $140 money, funding coming into us per quart of wood. The reason there's a difference is if we just take it and deliver it and dump it in someone's driveway, we get $115 for the quart of wood. If we stack it, we get additional $15, and if it's outside of a Lake County area, Lakeview area, outside, within a certain few miles, they pay us an extra 10 bucks. So since we service countywide, if we go to Paisley or Out West Side, Plush or Yell, we usually get the max. And those folks want that stack. So it's just an operating agreement that we have with them, pretty standard. Mr. Bailey looked at it, we entered into it last year. The thing that we, I met with them this year and talked to them, because there aren't those folks that don't meet the energy assistance criteria and it's all based on financial. I requested a copy, a listing of who those folks are that are not meeting it and why. Oftentimes, folks meet it because they make $20 too much. $20 too much is still, it's worth my while to deliver them according to a period of firewood. Otherwise, they're not going to have it.
Great.
Well, there was an individual that.
That was some of the uniqueness that we found, so you, you're addressing that and you're able to make that call based on.
We're gonna make that call, but I have the time, it's me making, me making the call. We're gonna have a, we're gonna have a team that can use it, so it's just not on my shoulders. It might be, they make a thousand dollars too much, well, what's their home life like? Is it all medical? Are they, have they dumped a bunch of money?
I've filled some of the calls, so I appreciate you.
So it's not me, me making that call. Treasure Kramer's gonna make that call.
Yeah.
That'll get her, so if we could vote on that, I'd appreciate that, aye. But they'll be, it gets together and makes that call.
There's a name there based on other factors.
I was disappointed, I was disappointed last year. Well, I wasn't disappointed, I, I was, I'll be honest. We, we only delivered about $140, $150 quart of wood last year. Where a year prior, we were about 340. So I was a little disappointed we needed a bunch of wood out, but we had this contract and we were bound to the contract. So I requested some boundaries, the boundaries be stretched, and they're willing to accommodate those.
Very good.
So we're moving forward with that.
Okay, so you need.
And then any monies that come in, that we, we did for the quart of wood, we split down the middle with, we're a pre-cration facility. We use our half the wire and tear on our trailer and our vehicle and gloves for our crew members. The prison takes their half for the chains, for their saws, for maintenance on their chainsaws, and then also wire and tear in their van and their trailer as well, and then safety equipment. So I think they're getting, I think the, the split for this year, I'll be working with Nick Young, getting them a check is about $2,300 this year, will be their last five, excuse me, will be their split. So can we retain $23, $2,300?
Okay, all right, so entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
I'll second, motion's been made and seconded to accept the Oregon Low Income Energy Assistance Agreement as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Jake, your next name is Youth Investment Physician.
With, with our current Youth Investment Coordinator, Mark Albertson, being elected as County Commissioner, that leaves position open as in the juvenile department. So we opened that up in September, we have interviews last week and made a formal offer to Micah Patterson to take on that position. So I'm here for the board to request permission to fill that position starting on October 28th, excuse me, October 30th, to work side by side with, with Mark. The reason being typically, we don't, with Youth Investment, we've done that the last two times. I've been able to have the coordinators work side by side. And it's important because the current coordinator, Mark, has built those relationships with all the schools in Lake County and also the youth that he's been working with. So there's going to be some kind of transition, some kids' older transition. Is 60 days too much to ask for a transition? I can't put a number, I can't put a number of days up for the transition because we may feel comfortable moving forward, but it's the youth, the kids we work with and the administrators and the schools that we work with. So to help fund that for two, two months, 60 days, it costs us $12,500, $12,641.
$71, yeah, $12,671.
I've worked with the treasurer, some of that will be absorbed within my, within my budget, my materials and services. And.
So we'd like to do the same thing that we just talked about with the fingerprint equipment in the jail. As the budget here progresses, we'll see where available funds can come from. I think Jake might have dollars in materials and services that we can, by resolution, transfer to that salary. Or simply, we might also look at the commissioner budget, this is kind of a dual, you know, dual process here in that commissioner budget too. So between those two budgets, we'll see what's available to use on this position.
I'm very supportive of that transition, transition is critical, especially as you mentioned. Transition is critical, especially for kids.
I, I don't disagree, and I don't think Mr. Albertson, who's in the back of the room, disagree either. He was fortunate to have a little bit of transition, but his transition occurred during the summertime. So there was a little bit of transition required to add it, it was huge because we have Youth Investment Coordinator with him for 18 years, and those relationships go on.
I, I don't disagree with the transitional, the, the cost, making sure that we're able to afford the cost.
I think we'll be able to afford it, I'm just hoping that my, with my juvenile budget and then I'm looking with the treasurer.
We've come up with a, Sheriff, Kenny already mentioned, we're gonna have a windfall of black crested pine.
So you're on a motion to accept the financial obligation. And that financial obligation, the impact, that's the total impact, that's the $12,671, but with efficiencies within your own budget and looking at other budgets.
Absolutely.
We'll know more if we get close to the end there, end of the fiscal year, not the calendar year, for this impact to be.
Absolutely, and the impact will not be $12,000 at a time or whatever, or 800?
That's your own total cost.
I have a total cost, I can't see the impact, the impact on the general portfolio. My, in my whole, significantly less than that.
Well, it's going to be that impact, no matter, watch this, where the money comes from.
Well, it's true, but out of my budget and I'm talking contingency.
Entertain motion?
I'll move that we accept the fiscal impact of $12,671 for the transition as presented.
I'll second motion, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, next item, where's it done with you?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item is paint, take back program. And the manager of our landfill, which is a general fund operation, is Kevin Hawke. He works in the capacity as a general fund funded position on this, is not able to be with us today. And Melanie, you, you've been briefed on this, I believe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, so you know how they have take, paint take back events? It's the same company that he's, he's been working with, this just facilitates the option to take paint back at any time. There's some cost to people taking the paint back, as there would be during the event study held, holds once a year in different locations. It's just a service to the public that they can do so they don't have to store the paint for an entire year before doing the take, paint take back event.
We, we just recently took over the operations of the landfill and this, Melanie says, will give the opportunity instead of once or twice a year being able to have it, publicly come in and bring their paint in this, anytime they move a landfill, they'll be able to take the paint there now. And this agreement would be between Lake County and Paint Care, just to upen the efficiency and the quality of the landfill to be able to get service to our citizens.
We, we won't fiscally be from this as a county.
Right.
The citizens will, and convenience.
So, and I'm sure legal counsel reviewed this on and on, all the normal questions we ask. You want to make a motion, or you don't need to?
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to accept the agreement between Lake County and Paint Care Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Looks like the next four things is Ms. Bozini. The first one is HRTG grant renewal.
Yep, um, so this is just a renewal of the grant that we had with the Department of Veterans Affairs in the past, for $45,000. It provides rights for veterans to medical transportation appointments, or provides, excuse me, I'm a close trigger, I don't know why, provides $45,000 for transportation for veterans to medical appointments. We are the fiscally responsible party, of identity, and then Lake County Senior Citizens Association provides the service.
So the, these dollars pass through the county, go through the UFRF, the process, people qualify and are implemented and put on the ground, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll move to accept the HRT grant renewal as presented.
Correct.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Looks like we're going to move on to the Canon Image Runner Advanced C5531I2.
Yeah, as you guys know, I'm trying to streamline our services. I have all of our printers on one VP now, which has been great. It costs less for time with other departments and processing them. In addition to that savings, this will save the county $320 a year as opposed to our current.
So I will move to accept the Canon Image Runner Advanced C5535I2 as presented.
Correct.
Further discussion? Melanie, thank you for working on getting the county the most efficient way we can. These, as over the years on printers, it comes and it goes from one vendor to the next, inefficiencies, stay on top of it like you are, appreciate it very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
What was that number you, that Ken?
Roman number two.
That has any meaning to you?
Good job, Roman. Okay, so, so next we have Melanie, once again, resolution establishing the government's protocol for the central Oregon public strategy. And I don't believe this is an action item, or is this an action?
Um, yeah, I would like consensus at least to adopt this. This just formalizes the board. This just formalizes the board. At a later date, we will come together and nominate someone from the county and an outside entity to represent Lake County. But right now, we're just getting the makeup of the board finalized.
And you, what audience, can you scrap what this function is?
Yeah, so this is kind of looking at public land use as a bunch of counties. It will be between the, it's in Central Oregon, with five counties, Crip, Deshutes, Jefferson, Lake and Klamath. And it's looking at the griddier aspect of land use and how to best manage that as a group.
Good job. Right off the top of your head, without having to read it. So I'll make the motion to accept the government's protocol for the COC Society Court, looking to, on and on.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at this. Implement the National Wildland Fire Prohibition Strategy. So it's not just land use period, it's fire-related?
Yeah. No, sorry, yeah, it is for fire, just to have good management strategies and kind of have everyone on the same page, followed in the same direction.
I had to clarify that, because I heard you say earlier, the land use. Yeah, I can't. But it's basically a National Wildland Fire Prohibition Strategy, making sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
In limitation of that.
Dave, and we can go ahead and accept it, but there's some, I believe, on Scrivener's here, it's on page two. It says, whereas Deschutes County...
They will be the administrator.
And then it says, resolve the order of county commissioners of Deschutes County as follows. So is, is that verbiage correct?
Yeah, they're taking, from my understanding, they are taking the lead on administration. They're facilitating most of that work. And then we will provide a county official to represent us, and then a non-county person.
Okay.
So we're two people.
So that verbiage is correct?
Two people from Lake County.
All right. Any further discussion?
Did it all do, and Deschutes County will be the lead person yet?
I don't think that's an establishment, from what I understand. No one's been...
It's established, yeah.
This is establishing the position, and then they will set up a person.
Just thinking, old friend, Joe Stabler is the county forester for that area.
Here you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next thing I have here, Melanie, is initiative steering committee.
That was just what we went over. You skipped my TAM plan.
I did. Okay. I apologize.
No, it's...
Trying to get, I'm tired of putting up with Ken Cooper, and I'm trying to get out of here.
Oh, no, sorry, Red, that, that's just two lines. I, I, the agreement went over, is wordy for that resolution. So I have my TAM plan, the FTA...
Let's go back to that.
Okay. The FTA requiring a transit asset management plan. ODOT was gracious enough to provide one that will encompass all qualified entities, so...
Wow.
Yes.
You can do some work.
Yeah, it's saving lots of work, so there's a handy-dandy little scale that you can grade your assets on. We have six vehicles and one bus barn. And we've got everything entered in, and we're set. We just need to adopt this TAM plan that I sent to you guys not too long ago. And then there's a cover sheet.
You know how we glaze over on special transportation? I'm ready, I'm ready for action, if the other commissioner hits.
I don't know, we can discuss this for another three, five minutes.
Sure. It, no, I'm very grateful that they provided this service to us, because who would be daunting otherwise?
Yeah. Let me tell objective.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolutions to adopt the group, transit assist management plan and performance measures by Lake County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Sorry, you skipped over that, Melanie.
Nope, it's fine.
We have Title VI Amendment now.
Uh, yeah. And I have a letter somewhere from Carol Cladham. So you guys adopted my Title VI plan a month and a half ago, but I had to make a few adjustments. One of the adjustments was that I put a Spanish version on the internet for civil rights complaints. So I put that on the website, and then I put a function on there to translate any information that might not be understood on our website. I'm not sure where the letter is, I don't want it in my... I might not have gotten that too, I'm sorry.
Okay, so what does the motion need to be?
To accept the changes, I had to put, put a Spanish version on the website, and I had to...
So I'll move to approve the Title VI Amendment, as Melanie states.
Basically, you added the, the Spanish version?
Yeah. And then I put a function on there, a link that goes directly to Google Translate, where if you speak a different language, you can copy whatever you don't understand and plug it into Google Translate. And it will...
That include Japanese?
Every language you can...
You, you said it too soon. I was gonna say, we needed that twelve years ago. And I think Ken appreciates what I'm saying.
Well...
I made a motion, sir.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, now your discussion. So this is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I still don't fully understand our Chinese. Minutes, September nineteenth. I probably do, no, that's wrong. That's sort of funny, I ended up with March twenty-first, two thousand and twelve. That must be for this afternoon's meeting.
Yes, it is.
I, I did not bring my, my copy. We can, we can do that this afternoon, if you need to review them.
I'll take one.
Just the one set, yes?
Yeah, that was from our joint, our combined session last night.
Are you gonna be back at one o'clock, sir?
I am.
Okay. So, um, are you comfortable with it? Move to approve the minutes of September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have anything else for Ken Cooper? Thank you for saying no.
Nope.
No.
I do, but...
You do, go right, go right ahead.
Well, this is just a, this is just a...
Department update?
Yeah, kinda, sorta. So at some point, we're gonna have to deal with this Kroger place up. I forget his first name, Mr. Kroger.
Kroger?
Kroger?
Yeah, Kroger, thank you.
You're talking about the RV partner?
Correct, correct. I just dealt with it in part way. Well, I was, I'm under the impression, and I have paperwork, so I, I know the answer to this question, but it was, that whole place out there was to be a temporary use deal, and then it was supposed to go away.
And those, in a town.
Correct.
Now, it had been annexed, and what was allowed to stay was town decision, I would assume.
Okay, sounds where it sits at.
If it's all annexed in, that was part of it, and so it is under town jurisdiction as far as... I know the roads are, are taken into their system, those are actually city roads within that complex.
Right.
As far as...
But where it's gonna sit with us, and the building side of this, is electrical plumbing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so I, I would encourage you to talk with the town and find out what...
I have, and, and when they say it, you're caught in the headlights, is an understatement.
Okay. So, so what, what do you see be... It can be of value to the community if that was brought up and brought back into a standard, if the landowner wanted to do that.
Absolutely.
And so there's value for the cost of all that infrastructure, everything that's been put in. I don't know what's been removed or not. So there's that potential value, but whatever the town's agreement is with that landowner, if watching stay or can't stay is between them. If he's gonna use it, it has to be brought up to code by your world, correct?
Correct.
And so our plan is, is if he goes to use it, as he gets permits and inspections, that's where we come in. Unless I'm, I'm not fully understanding...
Well, that's correct. I'm just, since, since I'm coming in on this, on the latter part of it, you know, things like depth of wires, you know, was everything code, you know, put in to code at the time? Was it just put in as a temporary? That's what I, my logic is, if it was put in as a temporary, you know, this, many things are probably put in quick with the assumption it was coming out.
There were some concerns on the electrical...
So I am not, I'm, I just, I just wanna relay my concerns.
So there should have been inspections and everything, that should have been laid out in that permit whenever that was done. So you should know the depth that it was buried, if there was any variance from the depth on the temporary status by looking at the permit.
Right, from what I can see, or what I can find, not so much. So I just, I'm, this is just an FYI out there.
Okay.
Because when this does come all around, it comes to light.
You think it's a...
It'll be a concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I, I will, I will, you know, you know, when, when someone wants to ramp this up, and, and, which I'm assuming Red Rock will probably wanna do. This is kind of a heads up, what's, I'm sure is going to come down the pipe.
Sure.
And so I will, more information I obtain, you know, the more I'll come and give an update on.
Just, just a question, let's say the landowner comes forward and wants to re-energize this, no pun intended.
Aye.
Would it be as simple as daylighting some of the burial out there for you to, to be able to go in there and say, yes, this is...
Could be.
This is where it's at? Or could it be as simple as if it was a temporary permit, and at this depth, that another temporary permit's issued for the short term for this?
It, it could, if we're, you know, if we're all on the same page, and, and nothing becomes a fire life safety issue.
Yeah, so...
Bottom line is, that's, that's what I'm basing it off of.
Great, great heads up.
Have you spoken with Pacific Power?
Um, I have not. I've spoken with the owner of the property out there, and, and some of the things he was trying to want to do.
The reason I ask, that's been a discussion between me and Todd Andrews for, off and on, for a while.
Right.
Of course, Pacific Power, I'm concerned about to the meter.
Correct.
Everything out there, but they have a understanding of what's out there.
That's correct.
And I'd be able to give you some added info.
And, and I've gone down that avenue, and, and there's, there's quite a bit to lie, I mean, I've already dogmized across my teeth, and I know a lot of the answers to any question I'll bring up, but I just want everyone to be on the same page, because it will become an issue, I, you know, it... They're gonna, they're gonna look for places, there's, there's no other place where they decide to ramp up, you know, where these people are gonna stay.
Well, with, with the potential of the ramping up, the potential that, within the fire life safety and all that, we're here, we're here to help people get through the process. If the landowner can bring it to code, of whatever print is today, then that...
Well, to, to code, but, but like I said, there, you know, I have papers, you know, staffs, and all of this as a temporary usage. And, you know, it was supposed to come out as soon as Ruby left, it was all supposed to go away. That's fine, I mean, even, even if we find out that it's, that it's not kosher, underground, because there's so many transformers that induce loom all over that place, well, if this gentleman decides to turn it into an RV place, partial RV place, and does the landscaping, you know, these wires are eighteen inches or less, you know, and they start drilling for trees, and so on and so forth, it's not gonna be...
What, what would the...
Won't be good.
The other thing is, and you have the previous permit, if it was a temporary permit, then they'd have to go through the whole process of getting another permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
And there's some other things that have come to light, you know, it's, this, this system's two oh eight, two forties code now for, for any manufacturing.
Well, that's...
So everything would have to be...
Yeah, the possible unfortunate thing for the landowner is that he, he or she did not take and do due diligence and go ahead and get that over to a permanent setup, and today's codes and everything, and what today's codes are.
Correct.
And so...
Obviously, yeah, along there, along, along, because these, the Red Rock right now, is, they're, they're, you know, pushing there, which we all do, would come to light as far as permitting and plans and...
Well, maybe it's an opportunity for Red Rock and the landowner to do something jointly, to bring it to today's standards, and make it usable.
Yeah, but from down that path. As long as I'm, as long as I'm giving that information, everyone's got my back, that's, that's it. Yeah.
We watch for a, it come to you at the last minute, because usually it comes in...
Well, that's what's gonna happen, that, that's why, that's why I'm saying this upfront, because that's exactly what's gonna happen, but like I said, as long as, you know, I've got, somebody's got my back on the whole fire life safety issue, because that's where it all comes from.
We need to notify Red Rock.
Well, that's already, I believe you've already talked with...
Yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been talks, but, you know, goes back and forth, back and forth, but some of these, uh, gentlemen, uh...
They want to...
She thinks they're a little bit above the stuff, and, and so...
Send tomorrow, we will talk about it.
No, it, no, come on, you know, you better, I, I love, you know, I don't, I don't mind. I don't mind it, I just wanna make sure you guys, so that's, that's a great...
That's a great, that's a great update, uh, where I've approached, fought a little bit of discussion, and I tried to get Red Rock and others to engage earlier than this, is these are the potential properties out here.
Yeah.
You need to find out what needs to be done, don't wait till the last minute.
Exactly.
We've all talked ahead of the game, economic development, ourselves, you, and so if it comes down and they want it done within two weeks, it's like, sorry, but there's...
Yeah, if we have...
We have these rules and standards, we go by.
Yep, and if there's a, you know, if there's another meeting with them, you know, over the phone, again, that'd be great. As long as, as long as all the, as long as all the players are on, on board. You know, because that, that way they can trickle down to the people that are here now, running, whatever.
And, and so most all the players at the town have changed since the Ruby days.
Correct.
So then institutional knowledge, probably not, has pretty much gone. But Ray Sims, which was the town manager, I believe, might have some of that knowledge, which is no longer employed there, but he might have some of that historical knowledge of why they allowed it to stay.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, it's, um...
Or as of all in the county, we allowed it to stay, I don't know if it was a temporary permit.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah. Well, trying to, trying to, what's her name, Verda? Yeah, you know, someone else.
Yeah, okay. If there's anybody you need me to get ahold of, I'm willing to try to pull, pull the meetings together.
Okay. I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to put it out there, and I'm doing, like I said, I'll, by the time this all rolls around and it, the day of, I've already got the paperwork, I already get a folder, so...
Okay.
I just gotta hand it to him.
Well, I, I... I, I personally, myself, would love to see at least a portion of that preserved and brought up to the right standard, or...
Absolutely. No, you're, you're absolutely right, that... No, you're, you're absolutely right, that. If it's being utilized, you know, it's not just sitting out there, so utilize it.
Yeah, and so the question probably is also to the town is, um, on their climbing process, is that an allowed use of that property? Or was that just a temporary amendment of land use, does it still qualify?
I will get you a copy of, of what, cause I have all that.
You already checked into.
I'll have all their, their agreements, um, their contracts, everything's written up, um.
Well, let, let's see how we can help facilitate if that's really gonna be used, how we can help them get ahead of the hall game and stood behind.
Right.
So we, we always try to promote private sector first, you know, they're aware of county areas also, but.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a few things, I don't know, county council need to, you know, at what it comes light, if, if we have to write something up, you know, for the city, cause city had already something written up of the agreement, what was supposed to happen later on, and so.
All right, are you impressed, uh, across Alberta, the county that was used for man camp and electricity and funding and all that also?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I'm not totally familiar, the, the place we were at was basically, um, across from the baseball fields. And, uh, Mr. Kogar, Kogar or whatever, uh, he, he was actually wanting to try to utilize so many spaces. I'm assuming probably someone from Red Rock, you know, said, hey, we're gonna have, you know, a hundred guys come down to, you know, use, use them.
During, during the Ruby days, they complemented each other, that was private owned, the county, we still own what's called the man camp. That was where they have basically dormitory type places and it wasn't set up for individual RVs.
Right.
But all that infrastructure, all that water and everything is still in there.
Right.
What it would take to reestablish it too, and what was permitted and the way it was done would be, we might ought to look at that. I haven't had anybody come to me and say they would like to utilize that at this time, but that's it.
Can I add to the discussion?
Absolutely.
So hurtful. So you know a hundred year anniversary of the Roundup and Fair's coming up?
Oh, yeah.
Um, Jessica was discussing planting and like having people come in and be able to stay there as an option.
On the county park?
Well, just.
Either.
Either, I don't know. So if one of us could bring that up to code, I think that would help.
Well, they're, they're almost like two different things.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It would have to be dry camping on the county side and we've talked about over the years of, uh, uh, overflow at the, at, but on my fair board town.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, overflow and that being a potential for a short term, but the county's property does not have hookups for power, water, and sewer, we don't even have that at the, at the fairgrounds itself. But, um, it is something that could possibly be used for overflow, but I honestly don't see the investment into RV beds on the county property for sort of a one weekend use.
Yeah.
It'd be quite expensive.
Rodney, Rodney was on the board, Rodney's name is mentioned in the paperwork, so she was part of the city council or what, or something.
Probably was the county planning commission that.
That's what it was, yeah.
Because as urban growth boundary, the land use went through the planning commission for approval. Then once it's annexed in, now it goes over to the.
Right, no, she's been in there and we've had discussions, so.
But to me, it's two different things, uh, Kogar.
It is.
He needs to come. Uh, for the county, the reason I brought that up, and as mentioned, it's not set up for RV and all that. But if you just get acquainted with what's there, so if somebody proposes some use, at least we know I started the point.
And all the, all these sites were brought up there and you said in the Red Rock meeting, who was talking about cultural sites? And if you remember right, that was brought up of be sure and get out, find out which sites are, not cultural sites, which sites are available for.
Right.
So we, we need to get back. It's sort of unique with Red Rock, you have their contract, it's doing the, they have wood construction, do the construction side, that would be influx of workers coming in. You have Red Rock employees yourself, you have IR one group over here, so it's, they have to talk amongst each other also.
Well, Melanie is correct with the, you know, with this being a two separate issue deal, um, you know, this, we, we all have to start thinking about it in the next year. This nineteen is gonna be, it's gonna be a big one and there's gonna be a lot of people.
Yeah.
Period. Now, it might not be a lot of people, you know, January.
There's gonna be a phases, on their construction phase, they're.
Right, but if it's hundred and, this hundred year anniversary, it's gonna, that's gonna be about the, it's gonna be pretty close. I mean, that's gonna be, you know, i- i- if we were all thinking Red Rock stuff, you know, best thing you're coming to light, mm, thought it was radio. And then I went, wow, cause we've already discussed how many people are gonna be coming in to Red Rock.
How awesome is it to have a hundred year anniversary and have an extra three hundred people here and they get to participate in our hundredth year anniversary?
Absolutely, absolutely, but you still got a free plan on some thing and Melanie's after, she's absolutely right. This is, uh, there's, there's gonna be a influx coming in. And about where it says, just in my portion of the construction in, um, it's all, I can see it, uh, all, all developing at the same time. So you're right, Brad, it's gonna be an awesome, an awesome experience, you'll probably have more people at the fairgrounds.
It's a great opportunity for the private sector to look at expanding and having more spots along with, along private sector.
Yeah.
For the short term.
Which, yeah, so with your fair board hat on, uh, that's more things to bring up, um, fair board meeting with.
All we have to do is have the money to put in more RV spaces, my friend, we have a plan.
Nice.
The, the, the permit fees are just cost us so much, we can't afford to do it.
You get a good deal. Besides, that's on the record about.
Well, I, I had my septic tank changed out yesterday, that's why I dug it all with my grandson's little shovel.
Right on.
But I made other conduits so I could have fifteen campers on my property all feed into one, a one household septic tank.
Nice.
Only be for a short period of time.
Nice, you're gonna have it pumped every week.
And you went through the land use and all the things, it's all approved?
That's awesome, that's awesome.
It cost me two hundred sixty-five dollars.
That's it?
Are you in the city out there?
No, I'm urban.
You, you're just across the street from the city?
No.
No, you're.
Everything out there is urban.
All of that's up urban? It's just the water that ended up.
Everybody gotta pay for the dust, the cultural, the, uh, the, uh, what are those, bird blue jays and all, yeah, you gotta do all those studies, uh, which you probably didn't do.
And the fence slisters.
So we, we have a big meeting at one, we're going to try to recess this. These conversations can carry on amongst individuals you brought that made us aware of potential things out there, so appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And.
I'm just, I get acquainted with the county property, the property already, just in case I propose it, at least we have a starting point.
I do, that is something I, I would like to know, is, is, I, I'm not sure where.
We'll, we'll hop in the, we'll, we'll, we'll hop in the rig and we'll go out there and I can show you, I remember, Ken, what's there. Uh, Dave Manning, those are county prop, those are county properties, so, um, he'll, he'll be back for, next week, next week.
Perfect, yeah, you know, that'd be great.
Glad we take you out.
Yep, that's, well, that's perfect.
And they hold the job, no way to go. All right, so.
And then, oh, sorry, are we recessed?
Until one.
Okay, so I think special transfer.